Good afternoon. Please welcome to a special meeting of the Council, the City of Long Beach on Friday, April 8th, 2022 at 5:00 p.m. Your work role. Councilmember Postwood.
Here.
Councilmember Leston.
Here.
Councilmember Pendo.
President.
Vice President Charleston.
Here.
President McGinnis.
Present.
Let the record indicate the presence of City Manager Donaghy and Corporation Director Richard Gaddo, so now I will salute your flag.
Vice President Charleston, may we say the flag?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands on my nation, on my God, in his name, the Lord.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us on this Friday at 5:00. Can't thank you enough for participating and being here today, and also especially to the staff to hold up on your weekend.
First, I have the resolution authorizing publication for hearing of the ordinance to amend the code of formances of the City of Long Beach regarding Ocean Beach Park. This idea is a publication call and hearing will be held April 19th at 7:00 p.m. here in City Hall. I am to this resolution authorizing a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Long Beach and the Commanding Officers Association of Long Beach, New York.
Commissioner Walsh.
Turn this on. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We go to the first slide. So, the presentation I'm about to give is a presentation on the main points of the collective bargaining agreement, proposed collective bargaining agreement between the City and the Commanding Officers Association. It doesn't cover every single provision of the contract, it covers the main points. The actual contract itself is going to be made available, should just get ratified. So, can we go to the next slide? So, just in order of some background, the COA was established in April of 2013 after the members of the then PBA, the lieutenant members, certified, whether they were processed with decertification, if they wanted to become their own collective bargaining unit, that's the date that they were actually awarded their own status as a collective bargaining unit. The per decision that created them, let me see if I can show this out for everybody. The per position that created them actually gave them all of the terms and conditions of employment of current, then current PBA contract, and all of the applicable MOAs and other decisions that in effect apply to the COA unit. So, it was all the history of the PBA that became the COA's current contract. This is the first time that the COA has actually ever had a mutually negotiated contract with the City. They've been around over like years, I think some members have not had a contract or some, I don't know, but what does it say, it wouldn't say it? Five thousand twenty-six?
Five thousand twenty-nine days.
Five thousand twenty-nine days. So, before I even get into this, it was a year in negotiation. It was a lot of tense moments, a lot of good moments, so there's a lot of give and take back and forth. The current three members of the COA are in attendance. I personally want to thank them for working as hard as that they did. I want to thank the City Council up to this point and the City Manager for getting us to the point where we're actually presenting this particular agreement. Next slide. So, see, these are some of the areas of focus that took into consideration the City's fiscal condition, fiscal condition, and the manner in which we actually started to go into negotiation. Didn't want any retroactive payments, we wanted to fix structural cost centers, things that caused the cost of payouts and things like that to keep going up over time. Established a hard cap on separation payouts, want to try to decrease our operational costs, increase the number of appearances for the members of the unit, get some training time built into the contract that we didn't have to pay overtime for, decreasing some operational costs for overtime and increasing the ability to manage staff, moving the staff and having the staff have the ability to make agreements with the department to say, "Okay, I can work on this day, or I can work this particular chart," so long as it didn't fly in the face of the collective bargaining agreement itself. Next slide. So, these are the wage increases that are being proposed, and these are the years that they are being applied to. This contract covers 12 years. It's not, it should be looked at as these raises came in those years, and the union negotiated no retroactive payments, and the City held to that. So, the total percentage of increase here is compounded 17.5% over 12 years. It's about 1.4% a year compounded or uncompounded, if you just make the numbers and you divide it into 12, you have a 1.33% raise per year. Next slide, please. So, steps to top pay. The current contract, you go from sergeant top pay to lieutenant top pay. Now, there's three steps. So, the City in effect saves one-third of the top pay of a new lieutenant when they get promoted. Takes three steps to get them. You get a third for the first year, a third on your first anniversary, and a third on your second anniversary. That's the way this is saving the City money. Longevity payments. In the current contract, these are your longevity payments. Maxes out at $14,500 per year. The City felt that we were trying to work for the way to make them more reasonable, and we got ourselves to the new contract for any officer hired in the department. So, as time goes on, when officers hired, 2017 and beyond, that's already five years in the past, so they're coming up eventually, they're only, they get $3,000 of longevity from years 11 through 15, and then they max out at $5,000 of longevity year 16 and beyond. So, it's a structural fix on slowing down increase of cost over time. Next slide, please. Overtime management. So, overtime, we're going to go to the wheel, I mean, by the day, perhaps before. All right, so we're going to go to the wheel. There's a concept called the wheel, and then, which we brought into the COA. Right now, overtime is assigned by the senior-most officer for everything in the department. So, I'll use police officers, for example. If there's overtime in post A today, the senior-most person on the job gets the first whack at getting that overtime. They're the first person that can get the overtime. What the wheel does is it now takes in the amount of overtime a person has. So, you go with the person who has the least amount of overtime in the department, gets offered the overtime first, and then it goes on up. So, you go from the least to the most. Yes, thank you for this negotiation. Thank you very much for acknowledging that. So, that will be something that will save money in this unit, and a stance that we're taking in our negotiations going forward. Next slide. Overtime management again. So, when we're trying to assign people to specific details, instead of having to say with seniority, we now have these two considerations. We can look at the detail and say, "Hmm, we want to use a particular officer who has shown a particular skill set in writing summonses," right? "You've never written summonses, and this officer writes a lot of summonses, and we want to put a detail out for pulling cards over," right? That can now be taken into consideration. Additionally, what can be taken into consideration is specialized training. So, if an officer has specialized training in an intoxicalyzer, a 9,000, that's a machine we use to actually test somebody's breath, and we'll try to put out the DWI patrol. We now can say, "The officer do have that without any issues," are the people that we're going to put into that, making it more efficient for us as well. The other thing that we have now is grants and outside funding. So, for anything that is paid for for monies outside of the City's budget, we can specifically select the officers best suited for that particular opportunity if it's paid for outside. It's more managerial flexibility to the City, and yet still meets the ends of what the needs are for the City. Tour changes. Currently, if a member were to agree, "Okay, I'm going to work for you, Commissioner Walsh, on Saturday because you asked me to," even if that member said, "Okay," the Union could then turn around and say, "No, we are agreeing that because any time an officer works outside of their prescribed tour must be paid overtime." We now have the flexibility with the officer, the officer agrees to that. To be fair, if an officer comes to me and says, "Hey, boss, I really need to work Saturday instead of Friday because I have something going on," that's good of the command or good of the officer, we now can make the adjustment for the good of the member and say, "Okay, you can work on Saturday." We don't lose any time, we don't lose any operational, it doesn't cost us overtime to do it, but I can let the member switch there to work without the Union breaving the issue. Next slide. Recall. This is a very complicated part of the current agreement. It's many, many pages long. We simplified it down. Here's the basic restructuring. If a member of this unit goes home, and the bell rings, and we have something that happens, and we have to call them back in, that's called recall. It used to be they would get nine hours of pay, six hours of overtime, speaking in very general terms now, is what they would get. We've reduced that to five hours of overtime now, so a reduction of an hour, or seven and a half hours of pay. What it also comes up with, which is not up here, but I will say is, if I were to pick up the phone and call one of my lieutenants and say, "This is going on, I need to talk to you about this," that automatically comes as potentially recall. What the COA has agreed to is, if I call them on the phone and I talk to them for up to two hours, it's just a straight two hours of pay, one overtime. Okay? It's not the five hours, but still. If I go beyond that, then it switches into a recall provision. So, it gives us at the City the operational flexibility to deal with the expertise of the members in their, in the department, and get them to be able to talk to us, and reduces the cost to the City. That's the design. The new contract also has court recall. We are constantly having officers who go to court, take arrests, who go to court, that's the way it works. In the current contract, if a member is assigned to court, they automatically get called in for four hours, right? It's four hours minimum. If court gets canceled, less than 72 hours notice, they get the right to come in for four hours of straight time pay, even if they're not going to court. Okay? In the new contract, it's now reduced to two hours. They only guarantee two hours of pay, and if they get called in, they have the option of working two hours straight time, or they can say, "No, I'm just going to stay home," and it wouldn't force the city in. Okay? So, it reduces the incentive for the officer to actually come into work when they're not going to testify, and it also reduces from three days' notification to one day, 24 hours. Next slide. Oh, go back one more, this is important. The other thing that we got is, the department may change a member's tour of duty. Remember when I said they couldn't change, if you change the tour of duty, they get overtime? Well, we can now change their tour of duty up to five times a year for the purposes of going to court, so we can reduce overtime exposure for the department. Another very nice thing for the City. Go ahead. Chart days. Current members in the Police Department, they get these things called chart days. The reason these things were negotiated in many years ago was because the number of appearances that officers made was more when they're working certain charts. So, we negotiated, that didn't mean that they worked above the failure, there's a standard act, didn't mean any of that, it just means they had more appearances and were getting paid the same amount of money as someone who had less days to come to work. The hours were the same, but it was less days. So, they got these things called chart days. What this did was, for the current members, they're going to maintain their 12 chart days that they get here for a period of five years. On the sixth year, end of the sixth year, they're going to drop now to six chart days, and three years after that, they go to zero chart days. Any new member of the Lieutenant's Association, the Commanding Officers Association, immediately goes to zero chart days. 12 more days of work, no more costs to the City. That's what that basically points to. Next slide. Training days. In the current contract, there are no specific days that we can assign a member to go to training without paying them overtime. Current contract, you're working out so I get tour of duty, you get paid overtime. In the new contract, we have up to four days now where the members of the Association can get training. You can take them, change their tour, put them in training, up to 10 hours, no cost to the City. One of those days can actually be a community service day. So, I can take a training day, and we can assign officers from the COA now to work national night out, or go to a community meeting, or attend a civic association meeting, or there's a fair on the board room, I would like the lieutenant to attend, do community service work. We can assign that, and it's no additional cost to the City. The other thing that we have is a general assembly. That's a day where we can order everybody on the department in, and they have to show up. I can trade their training day for a general assembly. Currently, in the current contract, they get three hours of overtime for that. This would mean no cost to the City. Next slide. Separation payout. So, this is where we really fix the structural issues. The current members in the unit will get paid for their time on the books. Now, this is unlimited. Every day that goes by, the total amount of money in the contract keeps going up. They're allowed to save their personal time, they're allowed to keep it in their terminal days, keeps going up and up and up. What this contract does is takes all of the time of the current members, puts it into a locked time bank, though they're paid out, locked in at the rate of pay on the contract posted to effect, it doesn't go up. Okay? Right now, as the raises keep going up, the value of the days keep going up, and it keeps getting more and more and more expensive for the City. Also, this current contract, there's, the current contract, there's no cap. If you recall, maybe you don't, I'll educate you, that the Regal decision that came out, the arbitration award that the City won against the PBA, doesn't apply to this unit. Okay? So, we took the idea of Regal, they had a $275,000 cap for PBA, we put a $325,000 cap in for the COA, that no member can ever go above $325,000 payout. They could save up that much time. The interesting thing too is, is that with all the other time savings in here, on average, it will now take 25 and a half years for them to get to a $325,000 cap, whereas under the offices of the old contract, it would only take 15 years. So, the likelihood of a member getting enough time to get a $325,000 payout is low, much, much lower than the existing contract. Next slide. Oh, let me go back to that one more time. The other thing about the current contract is that if one of the current members retired, all of their payout money has to be paid within 60 days, and that means the City has to bond. The new contract says, "We're going to pay the current members all their time over six years, and by weekly installments with no interest." So, we're going to start to pay them in a much more affordable way for the City, so that it doesn't impact the residents and the taxpayers that much we have to bond, and then pay, you know, your interest on your bond and things like that. Next slide. Is this it? Yeah. Okay. So, leave rules paid over six years, no, the current members can never get an additional payout either. Everything that's locked, and that's what they get paid. So, any time that they have on the books, if they have vacation time that they saved up, they're going to wind up having to use that before they leave, or they lose it. Okay? That's a structural savings. All time that's carried over year to year becomes a little, you do it, use or lose, as I just said. And also comp time, this is where a member works overtime and they save it as time, the current members can't do that anymore, because they're getting paid out for it anyway. So, if they work a day, and they get paid for it on overtime, they get paid for, the very good pay period, it doesn't keep building up overtime for the City. There are terminal days. These are days, well, go to the next slide, I believe it showed up on the next one. I've got the terminal day, yeah, there it is. So, firstly, accumulated time. At the current time, at the current time contract, each member of the COA gets 40 hours of personal time. That's what they get, they get five days of personal time, every day that they use. All right? Unlimited carryover. When I say that their current payouts were unlimited, they could just keep adding these five days on top of it, so five more days, five more days every year. On top of that, they also get terminal leave days. They get six days for working here every year, called terminal days. Those get saved forever. Now, that's 11 days a year, that just keep going up and up every single year. Doesn't exist if this gets approved. Okay? The new members now only get 30 hours of personal leave time a year. Instead of 40, it went down to 30. And personal time can no longer be carried over to the next year. Personal time, if you have any left, July, seventh week, you get paid for it, it doesn't keep going up in value, raises, it's now, you're paid for it seventh week in July, no more payouts at the end of your career. So, another structural fix. Here's a real big savings. If you're hired on level four, January of 17, you only get five terminal days until you're 25, is that right? 25, yeah, until you're...
June.
June.
I'm sorry, June 30th, 2017, you only get five personal days, and on your 25th year, you no longer accumulate personal days. That goes away. If you're hired after June 30th, 2017, those five days are reduced to one. So, if you're here for 30 days, you only get, 30 years, you only get 30 total days of terminal time added up. If you're here for 10 years here under the current, you get 60 days. So, it's a dramatic reduction in the amount of time that the payouts will go up, making it much more difficult to even get to the 325 that we've agreed upon. Next slide. Oh, if you're terminated for cause, by the way, meaning you've done something wrong and we fire you, all of your terminal days are wiped off the books. So, that's something else in the contract. Next. Vacation time. Current members earn 240 hours annually of vacation time, and you can get paid for up to 50 of these when you retire. The new contract, the members hired after, remember since structurally, as people age through, the savings keep going up. If you're hired after June 30th, 2017, you now are restricted to 240 hours of, I'm sorry, before June 30th, 2017, you still get the 240, but if you're hired after that, you're reduced to 160 hours. You only get 160 hours of vacation time as opposed to 240 if you're hired after June 30th, 2017. Maximum of 15 days can be approved. It extends the time period dramatically, because they're using their vacation time over time, so that, you know, they're getting less days, it takes a lot longer for them to accumulate the time. Next slide, please. Okay, sick leave, in the current contract, there are 26 sick days a year, and sick days are not charged by the hour. So, if a member were to show up and he's into his tour over an hour, this is on his stomach curbs, and he goes home, that day's free. He gets charged the next day if he stays out. In the new contract, it charges hour for hour. So, if a member were to come in, he gets sick, and he says, "You know what, I don't feel well," goes home for seven hours, seven hours come over his sick clock. We had members years ago who would take advantage of that provision regularly. Five family sick days per year in the current contract. That's a provision that if my daughter or my son is sick, or my wife is sick, I can stay home to care for them on sick leave. Those provisions have been taken out. If they want to pull up, they can pull up, take a personal day, they can do that, or vacation day, some sort of emergency, we can accommodate them that way, but they can't use sick time to do that anymore. That's been taken out. So, the new contract, for the members hired prior to 2017, they're going to stay with 26 days. If you're hired after 2017, you're only getting 15 sick days or 120 hours. Dramatic reduction in the amount of time that they can, that they earn. Now, I said already, they get an hour for hour, there's an incentive now to incentivize members to come to work. If you don't take any sick time, we're going to give you 40 hours, and we're going to pay for pay to go to July. If you take an hour of sick time, we're going to reduce your incentive by an hour too. So, for every hour that a member uses going sick, it costs two hours of pay in July. So, it's an incentive to come to work. It's a lot more expensive to pay and back for a little overtime than it is for an officer to come in and us to give them a provision like this. Well, that, next slide. Excessive sick leave user program. This is, this was something that we focused on very, very aggressively. So, right now, if a member goes sick, he can go sick today, he can go sick tomorrow, and then he come back to work for a day, and he goes sick three days later, and there's really no penalty for saving for that. In the new contract, if you go sick twice within a three-month period, you're designated an excessive sick leave user. If you go sick three times in a rolling year, within a year period of time, you are also considered an excessive sick leave user. What does that mean? It means you are not eligible for overtime without the permission of the Police's permission. Monetary incentive not to go sick unless you're really sick. It also says, it says you must stay in your residence when you're not sick, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, some exceptions, to go to the doctor, pick up food, things like that, you have to pull the desk and ask for permission to leave. You have to bring a doctor's note in, verify that they were sick, and you have to speak with the police surgeon in order to return to work, or if we say, "No, you can come in, talk to the surgeon," the next day to get you back to work, we can do that as well. So, it's a management so that we can reduce the use of frivolous sick time. Next slide. Meal allowance, okay. At the current time, if a member misses their meal, they get $7.50, and if they, then they get an hour put on the books in comp time, time that they can use to take off. If they currently, they work 12 hours, they get an additional hour put on the books. So, that's two hours plus $7.50. If they work 12 hours and one minute, they get two and a half hours put on books in total, plus $7.50. These provisions were considered a little excessive, we can't be negotiating, no more meal money, $7.50 is now removed. If you work and you miss a meal, no matter how long you work, you get an hour put on the books, and that's it. So, it's about an hour and a half reduction in getting comp meal times, is what it's called, saving the City additional time, because every time they take off, a member takes off, we usually have to back for that overtime. So, another savings. And last but not least, we have combined Lincoln's and Washington's birthday into Presidents', eh, sorry, Lincoln's, Washington's birthday into Presidents' Day, and created the new Juneteenth holiday. It's a no-course item, but it recognizes an important milestone in American history. And last slide. So, we spent some time with our consultants, I worked with Ms. Resnick, our controller, and we did some computations of as reality-based as we could, what will this say? In retroactive payments, the City is saving $3.7 million. So, if you go back in time to the very first day of this contract, and calculate all of the provisions in this contract, and I didn't talk about them all here, you'll go up with $3.7 million worth of savings. If you then take the go-forward period in the contract, the time from basically today forward, you're going to save $3.8 million in total. And then, the total amount of savings here is $7.5 million of dollars, that you either would not have an increase or extra savings. So, there's an illustrious period, we call it. What happens even after that, when the 2017 hires, the members get hired? There's even more savings into the future, but the calculations get extremely difficult to explain, but there's even more savings than what's explained here. It's a very cost-effective way to manage the City. It's fair. It's fair to this unit, it gives the city much more ability to actually manage the police department, and it also brings this unit current. It's, like I said, I don't think the PBA has had a negotiated contract since two thousand and eight, if I'm correct, this unit since their inception. It puts us on a new road, and this contract goes through twenty twenty-five. We had labor harmony with the COA when this, when, when it did this contract. And now we'll entertain any questions from the council. Do you want to start this meeting here?
Thank you, Police Commissioner Eric Walsh. Any questions from the council? Mr. Bendow, do you have any question?
Sure.
I would also like to just say too, uh, for the benefit of, of the listening public, is that we had a very long executive session with the city council, walking through the entire contract in a very extensive powerpoint, and a lot of questions to answer here. So I just wanted everyone to know, we can discuss, um, negotiations because it still has not been ratified, but we can start to explain the, 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 the results of that negotiation, uh, as we stand now.
Thank you, Rob, and, uh, Mr. Lester brought food for our, like, two, two-hour-plus meeting, so thank you to you for that too, when we had our specific meeting.
I can, I can understand what you're saying.
We had an extensive executive session for the council on this negotiation. Police Commissioner Walsh was there, she answered numerous questions, and all I said was that council member Lester was kind enough to bring food for us at that meeting. You're welcome. Mr. Councilmember Bendow.
To, to President McGinn's point, we've already had a lot more questions answered, but, um, the, the current contract, um, if this is ratified, it calls for a minimum number of lieutenants-
Yes.
And then in a couple of years, it'll add one additional lieutenant.
Correct. Well, I'll move to that to your language.
Now, also in there, as you pointed out, anybody who's hired prior to twenty seventeen and moves up into the COA pops the cap of the regal arbitration.
So, you want me to explain what the, the listening public?
Uh, if you might.
Alright, so what, uh, Councilman Bendow, what do you want?
No, 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 that is a question, you mean.
Okay, alright.
So, based on historical and, you know, staffing, anticipated staffing in the COA, what percentage of people that are now under that regal arbitration in the PBA could we anticipate might, may enter the COA and now have that cap lifted?
Okay. So, at the current time, I have three, a need for three contents to, to get my, get it, make the management of the department manageable, okay, more manageable, meaning I can actually sleep fully on, you know, the six o'clock morning, so, or actually get a full incident. Um, so, if we were to hire, hire, meaning promote, anybody who's on the lieutenants' list now, and this was not ratified, the two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar cap, that's in the regal decision, would be called popped. There would no longer be a cap on them, and all of them, all the time that they have saved up would now be subject to full payment. So if I had a member that, uh, that is a thousand hours over the two seventy-five, I'd now have to pay for those thousand, city, not me. The city would now have to pay the thousand hours at their current hourly rate. So take more numbers, if it was a hundred dollars an hour, it's a hundred thousand dollars the day they get promoted on top of the raises that they would get, which would need immediate jump to top pay. So the structural fix in this contract is that it eliminates the popping of the cap, and it now has three steps to go to top pay, elongating the savings for the city, short-term and long-term. Does that make sense? And I, and you want to know percentage-wise?
Well, but there, there are, there are people currently in the PBA-
Correct.
-that promoted would be eligible to have the cap popped.
That's correct. There are four, because there are four on the list.
Okay, so really just be those four?
It would be those four, and I don't recall the numbers exactly of what it would cost if, uh, but it was a rough number that we used of approximately three hundred and forty thousand dollars if, uh, on average, it would cost the city additionally if I promoted them without this contract on day one. That's a rough number, it's going to hold me to it, it could be, it could be a little more, a bit less, but that's definitely the range, because we know how much time those members already have in the bank. So we know what that's going to cost if they get promoted without this contract in place.
Thank you. I'm looking at slide twelve, and it says that the payout is three twenty-five max.
Yes.
So the, the difference is fifty grand per person, if you have new members.
That's if this goes into effect. If this doesn't go into effect, the difference is between two seventy-five and whatever they-
An infinity.
An infinity, because it keeps on building.
So do you, so you put in a carve-out to make sure to, the, the, the delta is fifty grand?
Yeah, delta right now is fifty grand, that was deducted on all projections going forward when people came off. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions from the council?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
I'm, I'm sorry, you, right now, you have members that have, you know, a, a termination pay that is, that this does not apply.
At the current time?
Locked in, and it wouldn't apply after the contract because they already have approved
Uh, I'm sorry.
If somebody has separation pay, they're available now-
Correct.
-of X amount of money.
Correct.
They're a member of the unit, and we enter into the new contract-
Correct.
-separation pay does not get taken from that. It's only the new ones that cannot accrue.
The current members of this unit-
Yes.
Are going to get paid for what they have on the books in consideration of all the provisions put into the contract. That's correct.
Do, do we know what that amount is?
For the current members?
Yes. There, there are three current members, there are four.
There are three current members, um, it's somewhere in the area of, it's above two and it's less than two.
Okay. And, um, I just have to say something. I, I appreciate the amount of work you put in. I think this is a really good step forward. I think that, uh, you look at everything, um, of course, there are lots of things that I think are overly generous, but, you know, there's not much you can do with that. You know, you're coming from a contract that was, in my opinion, awfully generous. And so I think what you've done is excellent. But my problem is, it's a contract, and people should be able to see the contract before we vote. Now, in October of twenty twenty-one, Governor Hogue will change the law, the open meetings law. And I just want to read what she had to say. At a minimum, I believe that every government agency in the state of New York that's subject to the open meetings law should provide this information because the best constituents we have aren't informed constituents. They have a right to know what's on the agenda, they have a right to contact their elected officials and to share their concerns, and in cases where that information is not available until the last minute or at the meeting, that denies the public what they believe, what I believe they are rightly entitled to. Then we go to Mr. Walsh, who's the head of, uh, Open, uh, State Coalition, Open Government. And he's talking about this, and then it, uh, was passed. Said, "There's no practical reason why a public body with a website cannot scan and post online the board member's package for their meeting. Posting documents twenty-four hours before a meeting is a step forward, but it really should be forty-eight or seventy-two hours before a meeting. It is sad that obtaining a twenty-four-hour requirement is a victory, but that's how the New York Open Meetings Law works." Then a meeting from Ann Kathman, Anne Kathman, who sponsored the legislation, the change of the meetings law. Public participation in open meetings is a cornerstone of our democracy and a vital opportunity for citizens to have their concerns heard and addressed by their representatives. In order for the public to have an opportunity of meaningful participation in the process, they need to have access to discussion materials in advance of any meetings. But unfortunately, too many public bodies in New York State are using a weakness in our current law to skirt this important requirement. It is time that every public body across the state adopt this common sense practice, and with this simple legislation, we will ensure that they do. In this particular case, while I think you've done a great job, great contract, I think the public is being short-changed, and I think it's a violation of the new law that they have not been allowed to see the contract beforehand. As a matter of fact, I don't even think we, were you able to give out, uh, the presentation? You had, uh, I gave us-
I don't know if it made, made a difference.
I, because when I checked, it, it wasn't.
I didn't make up myself.
Yeah, alright. The law says, and I'll read you directly what the law says. If the agency which a public body functions maintains a regularly and routinely updated website and use a lot, utilizes high-speed internet connections, such records, when they talk about such records, they're talking about the contracts, the, uh, the, um, presentations that they get, such records should be posted on the website to the extent practical at least twenty-four hours before the meeting. Now, I know that we got our contracts more than twenty-four hours before the meeting, so they were available. Now, I have inquired why we can't wait till next Tuesday when we have an open meeting, when we have a regularly scheduled meeting, so that this can be in front of the public, where they can see the contract, where they can see your presentation, and where it's not a special meeting. And I really don't have, I have not received the answer, but the way I read from-
I'm sorry, may I, may I respond?
Please.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session because it sounds like you're going to talk about collective bargaining.
Yeah, then what?
You're going to talk about the collective bargaining in the contract.
Do me a second, I'd like to make a motion.
So I have a motion on the floor to move to executive session.
Do, do me a second.
I just want clarity around that.
Mr. Lester is talking about the contract, the contract negotiations.
Not, I, I don't know, he's talking about the meetings law.
Mr. Barryett.
So I just wanted to ask what you were going to say.
Well, Lester, we have a motion on the floor, so let's-
I second the motion.
Motion to move to executive session for, to discuss the collective bargaining issue.
I, I just want, I just want more clarity on that in general. I would, yes, we can discuss it and come back out. Yes.
Can you, Lester?
No.
I'm going to say at this point, I don't think we've gotten into the negotiations.
We can hear.
No.
Are you going to executive session because we can't do this? Yes. Yes, at the risk of, uh, so basically, a contract negotiation is a, is a negotiation until the contract is signed. Therefore, I feel it is my responsibility to not jeopardize this negotiation, which is at a critical point right now, and I vote yes.
Okay, move to executive session.
Okay, so we are back from executive session, and, uh, continue now by asking if there are any remaining questions from the council.
I was in the middle of talking, and we wanted to executive session.
And, and I will, as, as according to Robert's rules, I will now address you, Mr. Lester, to please continue your conversation.
Basically, as much as I like this contract, I feel that the way it's being approached and the rush to do this is a disservice to the public. My personal belief, and I know that there's, you know, other attorneys that disagree, my personal belief is that before the city council votes on a contract that literally is costing the city and the taxpayers of the city millions and millions of dollars, the people should be able to see what we're voting on. Now, I know that there's disagreement on that. People say, well, if it's a union contract, you're not entitled to see it. I disagree with that. I think that anything that is costing the people of the city money, that we're not naming any particular people, people are entitled to see and ask questions. We always ask, and you will see after we've done, after the council has done speaking, you will be asked if there are any questions, and yet you've never seen the document. And the document was referred to in, uh, Commissioner Walsh's presentation. And he says, "The actual contract should be read to gain a more complete understanding of the proposed contract and all its provisions." Now, I understand that the contract will be available after, you know, it's passed on, but that doesn't allow people to ask the questions. And I really think, from my point of view, the residents of this city and the taxpayers deserve more than that. They deserve to see what's going on. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? That will close our comment period. Thank you, Commissioner Walsh. Are there any questions from the public?
I don't want to resolution authorizing publication of hearing of ordinance, mandatory ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding motion due to part. Let's just move the adoption to the side.
I will.
Second.
I will.
Boy, I have some questions.
Um, I just, before I casted my vote, I just wanted to express that in moving on to the hearing, there are so many unanswered questions I have at this time on the exploration of potential revenue stream concepts, um, that in my mind could have potentially impacted the fee structure as it's currently listed here. So I just wanted to have that on record to state that I would like to try to have these answered before April nineteen, um, before the news to, to, but I vote yes.
Councilmember Lester.
I agree with Ms. Postle that there are a lot of unanswered questions with regards to the fees and the proceedings, and, uh, it, it will be good to get this out in public hearing, so I vote yes to it.
Councilmember Bendow.
Yes.
Vice President Tristen.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
I just want to say that I had also emailed each council member on Sunday evening with a list of potential cost savings and other revenue opportunities, and I did not hear back from every council member as of today. Is that a vote yes?
I intend to resolution authorizing a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Long Beach and the Commanding Office Association of Long Beach in Europe. Let's just move the adoption to the side.
I will.
Second.
I will.
Go ahead, Councilmember Postle.
Yes.
Councilmember Lester.
I have to abstain on this, I do not believe it's a valid, uh, presentation at this point.
Was that, that was abstained?
Abstained.
Councilmember Bendow.
Yes.
Vice President Tristen.
Yes, and thank you to the Police Commissioner and the City Manager and the staff and the members of the COA. Yes.
President McGinnis. President McGinnis?
I just want to say, again, that's Police Commissioner, City Manager, Corporation Council, Rich Barrios, members of the COA. Again, this council keeps having to address things that should have been done in the past, such as Haberman, ISTAR, this contract from 2013, PBA contract, which is only until 2017, the Fire Alliance contract, which is still in 2010. And this council is moving forward with this administration, and I'm very proud to be here today in a representative democracy, and that's why us five elected officials are up here. With that, I say yes.
Do we have a motion opposed, Peter?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Go ahead, Catherine Arpaolo.
Yes.
Councilmember Lester?
Yes.
Councilmember Bendah?
Yes.
Vice President Tristan?
Yes.
President McGinnis?